Good afternoon, I'm calling the December 6th Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting to Order. Just to let everyone know Supervisor Smith is at home and let myself and Mr. Curry know that she would be participating electronically due to medical reasons and she's participating from her residence. If everyone would please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now during this moment of silence, I ask that you place the family of Doug Bumgardner in your thoughts and prayers. Doug passed on November 30th among his many accomplishments. He had been the Commonwealth's Attorney for Rappahannock County from January 1980 to 1984. Moving into the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, there is no need for the closed meeting today. Jodrick Erby has still not made a ruling, so there's no need to have that item on the agenda.
Alright, so we'll be removing K1.
I'm Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda with the amendment to remove the closed session for discussion of ongoing litigation.
Alright.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving into presentations, we have Dr. Grimsley here with the school report.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Can you guys hear me okay? There we go. Members of the Board, greetings and happy holidays from your friends at RCPS. So much has happened in our schools since last month's report. First, I hope you were able to view our students' artwork featured this year in the Rappahannock County Art Tour. The selected pieces truly captured student experiences the last couple of years, some very positive, like the wonderful Wednesday experience, and some not so positive as the high school's compelling image depicting tearful mass students reaching for a girl's outstretched hand on the other side of a bright sunny scenic landscape. Our kids have been through a lot, but I am very pleased with their resiliency and some of the amazing experience we've been able to provide this year, bringing back some semblance of normalcy. Our students were able to honor Veterans Day despite not being able to hold our traditional ceremony this year. At RCES, students and staff brought in photos and memorabilia of veterans they wished to honor. With more than 75% of the whole school participating, the students were then able to walk the school hallways, holding their special pictures and items in a touching Veterans Day parade. At RCHS, an outdoor program was held for senior and junior classes. Students gathered in front of the high school, each holding a flag to place along the bus loop. The program consisted of the Pledge of Allegiance led by SCA President Liberty Sell, followed by a performance of the Star Spangled Banner by our Panther Band, and eloquent remarks by Principal Carlos Sourd. Your Panthers were very proud to be able to honor our veterans in this way. The English Language Learning Team, ELL Team, hosted an ELL Family Night on the evening of November 11th. With almost every family in attendance, it was a wonderful opportunity for all the students and families to meet one another, all the while enjoying fun activities, games, a special dinner, and information sharing from ELL Teacher Martina Bullard and ELL Aid Viviana Tercera. The RCPS Commit to be Fit Team held a special Thanksgiving Farmer's Market and Turkey Giveaway in gratitude for all RCPS employees' hard work this year, thanks to both the Staff Wellness Grant and Commit to be Fit Grant. Staff were given a $40 voucher to purchase items bought from our local farmers such as jams, jellies, fall vegetables, herbs, apples, honey, beef sausage, and more. Each staff member was then given a turkey to enjoy over the Thanksgiving holiday. Speaking of goods from the community, Mr. Hogan's Welding and Metalworking Students hosted the Bounty of the County event. During this annual Thanksgiving tradition, Mr. Hogan started over a decade ago. Students brought in foods to cook that were either hunted, harvested, or handmade in the county. Students were tasked with crafting the grills and smokers that were even used to prepare the food. I was invited to that and I just made sure that all the students could tell me exactly how they prepared everything, that they were preparing. No squirrels, right? Okay. Our schools are certainly in the holiday spirit after last week when numerous volunteers, staff members, and students decorated the outside of the elementary school with donated lights, ornaments, and decorations. The display is part of the Rappahannock Winter Wonderland Display. Last week at the high school, students participated in the first-ever Renaissance Day. This day was designed to incentivize students to complete missing assignments to participate in various social activities throughout the day, including outdoor obstacle courses, volleyball and dodgeball tournaments, gaming, movies, and more. The day also allowed for additional teacher planning time in order to better serve remote students, as well as assist struggling students with missing work. A structured study hall period was provided for all students needing extra time and extra help, while teachers and tutors were available to support students needing to complete the work. Overall, the event was a huge success with all students being able to participate before the end of the day. No child was excluded from participating in Renaissance Day activities. An evaluation of the event is being done in order to tweak the event with the intent of holding another one each marking period after interims come out. After Renaissance Day, high school students were able to participate in the Winter Gala, a formal dance provided by the Rappahannock County Sheriff's Office. Students dressed in their best were treated to music by a professional DJ in a huge heated tent. They were provided a beautiful spread of food, snacks, a candy bar, as well as hot chocolate. Students could sit outdoors by the fire pits or hang out in the ventilated tent. A professional photographer was also on site to capture their smiling faces as they posed with their dates and friends in front of a beautiful winter backdrop. I hope you had a chance to hear our amazing Panther Band at the Winter Wonderland Event at Avon Hall yesterday, but if you weren't able to make it, you have another chance. The RCHS Winter Band Concert will take place this Thursday night at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. The event is open to the public. And then finally, fall sports finished strong with Miranda Jenkins named First Team All-District and First Team All-Region for volleyball. Tori Atkins was named Second Team All-Region for volleyball. Luke Ellis, cross-country Region 1B champion, and also Luke Ellis and Nick Plaxton both went to the state championship cross-country tournament. We hope you will come out to support our winter athletics teams, including two middle school boys and one middle school girls' basketball team. We have both girls and boys JV and varsity basketball, varsity wrestling, and Scholastic Bowl, who actually have a meet tonight at 5:00. Right now, we are slated to host a Scholastic Bowl tournament on January 15th. More information to follow. For a complete schedule of events, our AD reminds you to please visit the athletics website. Also, stay tuned for a special announcement about the return of our spring musical. Thanks to the hiring of our new performing arts facilitator, Mr. Henry Mason, RCHS alum and Virginia Tech graduate. Finally, RCPS is wrapping up our fall semester, which ends on December 17th. SOL testing is underway at the high school as we speak. We are optimistic that we will finish the semester Panther Strong. As always, thank you so much for your continued support and advocacy for our public school. Do you have any questions for me? I know that was a lot, and I condensed it, if you can believe it. Lot going on.
Dr. Grimsley, we thank you for the presentation. We talked last month about this traffic issue on Schoolhouse Lane and the fact that for a period of time each school day, that one of the commercial properties back there is having difficulty getting people in and out. So, thank you for arranging the meeting that I had recently with Ms. Johnson, Mr. Tupper, which I think was very productive. We did identify one possible solution, and I also talked to the property owner, and he is really pleased that you all were so willing to talk through some ideas. So, I'll remain in touch with them, but thank you for that. And then the last thing, you reminded me of something that we talked about last year. You were talking about Mr. Hogan's welding class, and I have a constituent who's a very accomplished welder who would be willing to come in at some point and provide sort of a career talk about some of the things he does to perhaps inspire some of those students who might pursue that as a vocation. So, it's a reminder to me, and I put it in my magic notebook to not forget again, so hopefully we can make that happen. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Were the culinary students involved in the cooking?
For the bounty of the county, not this time.
Alright.
There are other things, yeah, that would be neat.
Absolutely.
But they actually cooked in handmade grills and smokers they made. Some of them were in the shapes of animals. It was incredible what they could do, and they were very functional, so did the job.
Great, thank you very much. We are now with the presentation of the audit by Robinson Farmer Cox.
Mr. Josh Roller is here. He's been the point on our audit for all the years that I've been here, and I imagine number before that.
Yeah.
If you want to grab the grip just below it and squeeze it and slide it up.
Squeeze it, there you go.
Alright, good afternoon, and as just introduced, my name is Josh Roller with Robinson Farmer Cox, here to present the fiscal year '21 Audit Report. I'll start with, this is, I forget which number of years in a row, but we have finalized the report and we'll have the APA transmittal to them on time. The APA requires their comparative cost report, as well as the audit report to be finalized and sent to them before December 15th. We've hit that deadline, as well as hitting the Code of Virginia requirement that the audit report is presented to the Board in December, so. Starting, one of the letters in your packet there is the Communication with Those Charged with Governance. This is standard communication at the end of the audit process. The one thing I'll point your attention to is the one kind of change this year compared to prior years. The first paragraph under Significant Audit Matters, this talks about how there was one new accounting principle that was adopted this year. It's GASB 84. It has to do, there's a little bit more detail in the notes that we'll get to, but that's the one change this year compared to prior year's reports. And then now getting into the actual audit report, I'll just kind of point your attention to a certain items within the report. We won't go through every single number on here, obviously, but then happy to answer any questions you all have at the end. The first part of the report, pages 1 through 3, this is our independent auditor's report on the financial statements. This is where we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion for the county this year. The next couple of statements I'll point your attention to, Exhibit 3 on Page 7 and Exhibit 5 on Page 9. These are your governmental fund statements, your balance sheet, and your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in equity. As you can see, on Page 9, Exhibit 5, the general fund, the first column there, saw a total increase for the year of 1.6 million, coming to an ending fund balance for the general fund of 7.3 million. And flipping forward just a couple pages, Exhibits 7 and 8 on Pages 11 and 12, these are new statements this year compared to prior years. This is related to the GASB 84, where it requires these certain fiduciary funds to be reported this way. These are not funds that, they don't hit any kind of fund balance on the county related to general fund or any of the other governmental funds, but they do have to be reported there. The flipping forward quite a bit to Page 28, Note 8, this is your debt note. It lists out the different long-term obligations of the county. On there, you can see the total outstanding of the bonds at the end of June 30, '21 is $890,000, which I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but the current year portion is $335,000, if that's correct. And flipping forward, close to the end of the notes on Page 81, this is Note 25, Implementation of GASB 84, and this is where it shows what was previously reported, then the information of '84 requires these three items for the county to be reported as these separate funds. The special welfare funds from Social Services, the sheriff funds that are held, and then also the school activity funds have to now be, school activity funds go through their own separate audit. We're taking those audited numbers and putting them, they now have to be reported as a special wealth, or special revenue fund on the school board side. From there, right after the notes, Page 84, Exhibit 9, this is your budgetary schedule for the general fund, usually the most useful statement in the whole report. It shows just for a general fund, your original budget, amended final budget, as well as your actual numbers for the year, so you can kind of see current year variances for revenues, expenditures there. Exhibits 31 through 35, and I apologize, I didn't write down the page number on that, but these are the financial statements for the school board, and again, this is where the school activity funds are now reported as a separate fund on there as well. And then the last section I'll point your attention to is the compliance section of the report. Page 134 is our auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting. Here, we're required to test certain controls over various items that come to the numbers on the report. You know, we're testing payroll, we're testing payables, revenues, and from our testing, we came up with no issues that came to the material weakness or significant deficiency, so this report is a standard letter, nothing to report there as well. And flipping forward two more pages, 136, this is our auditor's report on federal compliance, which is regulated by Uniform Guidance. And again, here, we had no issues on any of the federal compliance programs, any of the federal programs we were required to audit this year. We had no issues of non-compliance there. And two pages forward, the Page 138, this is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This just summarizes the total federal expenditures of the county and school board for the year, broken out by the different federal programs there. And just the one number here, the total of all those federal awards was 3.3 million. You can see on the bottom of Page 139, of that 1.1 million was made up of the CRF, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, so quite a big increase just related to those. And at this point, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Five questions, hopefully that's it. First one, and I should have asked this last year and didn't think of asking it, on our balance sheet, which you just taught me in government accounting parlance, it's called the Statement of Net Position, I noticed there are no contingent liabilities related to ongoing litigation, and I, it concerns me a little bit because I know for certain, having participated in one lawsuit already, that there are litigation matters outstanding that could or hopefully don't, but could result in some kind of monetary settlement. And so my question is, what is your process for determining the extent to which any litigation-related contingent liability should be reflected in our Statement of Net Position?
So, for those, we consult with the county attorney. He kind of gives us a detail of all the pending litigation, all threatened litigation, and he makes a determination of potential possible loss, as well as the likelihood that the county would lose that lawsuit. For it to be recorded as an actual liability on the balance sheet, for even if it's after year-end, it would need to be from the county attorney saying that it's very likely we're going to lose this, and we have a very determinable amount that the county would have to pay. There was nothing noted that would arise to that level.
And my follow-up question, now I have six questions. So, my follow-up question is, would it not be more conservative and better protection for our citizens if with any ongoing litigation, if we didn't post some amount of a contingent liability related to that, is that standard accounting practice in your field?
Yeah, it's just standard, standard GAAP, general accepted accounting principles. The only way you're supposed to record a liability is if it's very determinable and very likely, just because if it turned out that you didn't have to pay that, then, you know, then you have this liability that's kind of...
Okay. I think it's something I'll definitely pay attention to more in the future. Alright, thank you, I'll be quick. Our debt burden, when measured against revenue and cash on hand, are you comfortable with it compared to other localities? You've seen, we always like to compare ourselves to others.
And without having other county reports in front of me, just comparing your total debt, you know, outstanding at the end of the year, you know, of actual debt of $890,000, that's definitely on the lower side compared to other localities of similar size.
Okay, great. And then, GASB 84, I think that's just, it seems like it's really intended to isolate sort of non-operating revenue? Is that a good way to look at it?
Exactly, yeah. And those funds before were reported in the report, they were just called agency funds then. It's just a difference of how they have to report, a little bit more detail now, kind of showing the additions, deductions, your total assets. Before, agency funds, it was just kind of the total beginning balance, total additions, total deductions, here's your ending, and that was it. So, just a little bit more.
And then in a moment, we're going to talk about real property reassessments, which everyone's talking about. How will that reassessment process affect if at all the valuation of our county's real property assets? And should we expect to see an increase in asset value in next year's audit financial statement?
So, and speaking a little bit, not knowing all the facts, I'm assuming if assessments are going up...
They're going up.
Then rates stay the same, then I would think, yes, you're...
But in terms of our own asset valuation, because our buildings and buildings and property are reflected as an asset?
Buildings, property are recorded at historical cost. So, the amount that you paid for the building, paid for the land, paid for equipment, those don't change year to year, those are just, you know, you bought something 100 years ago.
That's historic.
For $1,000, it's still, yeah, that's still the same cost.
Okay, great. Property taxes receivable as one of our liabilities, that amount compared to cash on hand and ongoing revenue, are you comfortable with that? It's over $1 million?
Yeah, and that's something, let me find that page. So, that deferred revenue, deferred inflow for property taxes, it's over $1 million, but that $1 million should also included in that taxes receivable above.
Okay.
It's kind of another weird governmental accounting issue where it's revenue to be received, but it also has to be deferred just because it's not earned as of June 30th there.
Okay. Relative to when the fiscal year is starting to stop, and taxes are collected.
Right before the end of the fiscal year, so.
And then, could you just educate me on the investment line in our assets portion of the balance sheet?
So, the investments...
Yeah, oh, I see, it's all library. I was looking at the summary net position, and I now see, okay.
If you look at Exhibit 3, you can see it's all in the library there.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks a lot.
Yep.
Rachel, do you have anything?
No, I'll have to take a look at this later.
I'm just wondering, we did vote to add a, or selected to have a broadband authority created because of everything going on with broadband?
Right.
And I'm wondering, is that going to be a part of your report next year?
So, yeah, I talked to Debbie while I was here about that, where it was a new authority, but there was no money going in, no money going out, so there's nothing that needs to be reported. So, that broadband authority is a separate authority in the state, excuse me, will have to have its own separate audit, and it will be likely to be reported as a separate component unit on the report as well, excuse me.
Josh, do you know, right now, the REC Authority is lumped into our halfer, and the Water and Sewer Authority is separate. Do you know the genesis of that? And of course, the Water and Sewer Authority has a whole lot going on with revenue and expenditures.
And it's all related to how it's governed, and I would have to look at the details of both to kind of get you an exact answer, but it has to do with if the governing board kind of can steer the authority however they want, then it's usually a separate authority that way.
The Water and Sewer Authority can issue debt and the REC Authority can't?
Right, right.
Okay, yeah, good question.
Supervisor Smith?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Yep, thank you all.
It's nice to have stability in your position because it's highly efficient, so stick around, please.
Well, I'm not going anywhere.
If we need to write a letter to your boss or anything, let us know.
We'll do.
I will say, we went through an RFP process a few years back, and after looking at a few different firms, Ms. Nick and I recommended that we stay with RFC for now, and I think we have another couple of years on that opportunity. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Alright, we have now the reassessment update. I think Ms. Graham is here, is she?
Ms. Commission Revenue, Mary Graham and Don Thomas of Wingate Appraisal Services are both here to talk to you a little bit about the reassessment that is wrapping up, I guess, if you will.
So, I'm Mary Graham. I'm going to defer to Don Thomas, since he's of Wingate Appraisal Services, they're the ones who did the assessment for us. The extent of what my involvement is, as people need to research their properties and other properties, we are, you know, on deck and willing to help people and give them whatever information they need. That's been our role, and steering people in the right direction, so here's Don.
And hosting Wingate in your office.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. On behalf of our company, we appreciate the opportunity once again to be of service to your county when it comes to your reassessment needs. And today, I'd like to give you just a broad stroke update, if I could, on the progress of the project. We consider this a partnership with your county, and when I say partnership, we rely on Mary's office extensively for not only the space to operate out of, but also to keep us abreast of things like building permit activity and parcel divisions and subdivisions and that sort of thing, that we consider essential to keep our file in sync with Mary's files, so that at the end of this process, Mary's, the transition from our file over to Mary's office is painless and seamless as possible. So, that being said, we are, again, like I say, very pleased to be back in Rappahannock County. I think this is our third cycle here. And our objective here, when we commence any reassessment project, is essentially twofold. It's to keep with, in keeping with what the Code of Virginia requires, and also the agreements, the particles of our agreement with the county. We consider that two things are essential. One is that we have equalization of assessments, and that assessments are at their present market value. And in a robust, rapidly moving real estate market, that's quite a challenge, and I will have to say that when we started the project with our initial market study back in latter part of last year, we calibrated models so that we might be able to project forward a number that might be suitable for this ending, end of the process. And as we examined the data, the sale data coming before us through the early parts of this year and middle of this year, we found that that calibration would not hold, so we had to do a two-stage revision, if you will, to that calibration, so that the values that we put in place more closely resemble market value. That's just because the market's just moving, and it's just moving that way. And one of the things that we find in most of the markets that we're serving right now is that while, you know, you may see statistics about, well, the market is 10% year-over-year or, you know, 14% or 8%, there's a lot of figures that gets thrown around. And the thing that we don't like to get hung up in is each market performs individually. So, we kind of look at the data that we have available in order to analyze what was going on here. And to that end, our results, and you folks may be aware of this, we had a little bit over a 15% movement over the prior assessments. Now, for the most part, those assessments were put in place six years ago, and that doesn't sound like a whole lot, but we test that for reasonableness, and when we test that for reasonableness, we look at things like the last year's Department Taxations Assessment Ratio, median assessment ratio for Rappahannock County was a little bit over 93% for last year. Now, that changed considerably over this past year, and I have no idea what the state would come up for, come up with this year as their median ratio, but nonetheless, we moved the values. If you just look at the total of our assessment file versus the total of the prior numbers, we moved it about 15%. Now, that's also subject to our hearings, and we conducted a set of hearings. As you know, we've, several weeks ago, we mailed out notices of assessment change, and we advertised times and dates so that people might appear for the hearings. And to that end, we had, we had a prox- And, uh, and, uh, to that end, we had, um, we had approximately 104, 105 folks, uh, appeal, and, uh, and that would be, uh, through, basically through methods of, of making an appeal. An in-person appeal with whether appointment or walk-in, um, and a phone appeal was also accepted, and so we would, we would, for those that could not find their way in to, uh, or during the times, we would offer a, a hearing over the phone, and, uh, for those that, that chose to use the, um, uh, the appeal form that we landed on the county's website, that was also available. So between the combination of those three avenues, we had, uh, we had approximately 104, I think it was 104, uh, appeals. Now, presumably, some of those, some of those property owners may have owned more than one property, may wish to have appealed more than one property, and I don't have an exact number on those right now. But the, um, the, uh, when we look at, uh, what we expect, uh, in a set of hearings, we expect, uh, typically about 2% of the total parcels being appealed. That's what we expect. So 2% of this, of this population of parcels, uh, about 6,100 parcels, say 125 parcels thereabout, was our expectation. So we're gonna follow about that, we're gonna follow around that, uh, that number. Uh, and so, so that was fairly typical. Now, we haven't, uh, we haven't completed all our reviews yet, uh, I just, um, met with Skip Willett, the professional assessor for the county, I just saw him out in the street just a few minutes ago. And, uh, Skip was gonna try to, to continue those, and we hope to have those reviews completed this week, which means that we will notify the folks that appealed the parcels, uh, to our hearings. Uh, we will notify them either of a change or of a, uh, of, if, if we decided to affirm the existing proposed number, we'll notify both, in both directions, uh, by, uh, another statement, another statement through the mail. So that's going on, uh, we expect to be able to complete the project on time, uh, according to our agreement, uh, which is, uh, we have to have the, uh, the reassessment book, uh, notarized and certified, uh, filed with the Clerk of Court by December 31, so we expect to be able to meet that, uh, that timetable without any problem. And that's pretty much where we are right now, uh, with the, with the reassessment process.
Is it too late to appeal now? Is it too late to appeal?
To our, to our group, yes, but the, the beauty, beauty of, of the state of Virginia and, and assessment appeals is that a- after our, our group, uh, hears the, what we call the administrative appeals to the, to the process, then the county appoints the Board of Equalization to hear appeals that we didn't hear. The, the steps aren't interdependent, so you can appeal to the Board of Equalization without having made an appeal to our, our, our group.
And there is an agenda item a little later in the meeting regarding the BOE, and just, uh, one decision I'd like the board to consider, and then, uh, the court can get on their way with making those appointments.
Thanks very much, and I, I saw your assessor up and down my road a little bit too much. He was paying a lot of attention to our properties.
You can usually find our guys under, under a good shade tree sometimes.
Right, no, but I know you guys worked really hard on this, and obviously it was a bit of a shocker, more than a bit of a shocker to a lot of people, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ignore the, the obvious, which is a lot of people are concerned, and it'll be our job, separate from this assessment, as I've explained to people, to set a tax rate, hopefully that will result in, in, um, immaterial changes to tax bills for majority of citizens. Um, I'm not familiar with the Code of Virginia with respect to reassessments, but I did have one question from a citizen today regarding whether or not, um, Virginia law might dictate any sort of cap on reassessments, is it, it can go to infinity, I guess?
Well, you know, the, uh, the only directive that, that the law provides, as far as I'm aware, is that we are supposed to assess at market value. Now, I mentioned earlier that, uh, we, we basically have two objectives, and that's to achieve equalization of assessments and market value. Now, you can achieve equalization of assessments and not have all assessments near or estimated at their market value. If, if all assessments were 20% low, then uniformly across the board, they were all 20% low, then that's, that's, um, that's equalization, it's not market value.
Good.
So, you know, one doesn't give the other, uh, except in one direction. Market value, however, does give you equalization of assessments, and that's also important from the, uh, aspect of your, uh, the ratio that the State Department Taxation maintains on the county, and they do this for every county, it's a state and city, uh, there's that ratio of assessment, uh, mediums, uh, assessments to sale, uh, is, is also the ratio that the, uh, public service corporations obey. So anything telco, electric, uh, infrastructure, those types of assessments also obey that reassessment ratio, which is very critical to most counties. And, uh, so we, we like to think that, that, you know, we're, we're doing our job correctly if we get everything as close as we can to that 100% mark.
Okay, um, and then I had one citizen call, and first, and I mentioned to Ms. Graham before the meeting, um, a highly complimentary, Ms. Graham and Ms. Lane in the Commissioner of Revenue's office, and we're grateful for your service. Uh, their question was, in terms of the existing baseline data that are on the property cards in the Commissioner of Revenue's office, are you, are you confident in the accuracy of that information as you've reviewed it? Because I assume that that must be perhaps the starting point for your reassessment process, and one citizen just pointed out what they thought were, uh, clerical errors and a couple of the cards related to their properties, and I just wanna get your judgment about the accuracy of the data, and then perhaps ask Ms. Graham a follow-up question.
Well, after having, like I said earlier, this is our third, uh, uh, round with, uh, Rappahannock County as far as reassessments goes, and if there is an inaccuracy in an existing data from a clerical error point of view, or something that was misrepresented, that's on us, so, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Now, d- does that happen frequently? We, we're comfortable with the margin of error that we have, we, we sample our property cards, uh, throughout the process with, with supervision, so it's impossible to say that we'll have everything exactly as it should be, but hopefully the, uh, the most important data, data items and the characteristics that determine value are in their proper place.
Okay, and then Ms. Graham, during the interim period between reassessments, um, just very briefly, what's the process that your office follows just to ensure accuracy of the baseline data for properties?
If a taxpayer comes to us.
Okay.
With something that they feel is a mistake.
Okay.
We investigate it, um, so, you know, I've made corrections to square footage, number of bathrooms, you know, that kind of thing. It requires, you know, um, some kind of proof.
Right.
But I'm happy to make those changes, um, there was, and, and if necessary, you know, I have the right to refund three, three years' worth of.
Okay.
The mistake.
And those are for factual errors?
Those are for factual errors.
The house is too small, too big, there's the wrong number of buildings, things like that.
Exactly, you say we have a finished basement, but it's not, um, things like that. And so, um, after research and, and documentation, it can be corrected, and I'm happy to do that, 'cause we want it accurate.
Right, and I think during a reassessment, especially one like this, that went in a certain direction, um, needless to say, people are looking more closely at the baseline data that, that might have been sitting there idle for five years.
Exactly, and that's one reason, I, I hope that taxpayers have been using the, the Vamanet tool that's on the website, because that goes into square footages and all those little facts that we have about a house.
Good.
Um, and I, I urge everyone to look at theirs and make sure it seems right. Um, if, if someone inquires, uh, you know, about their property from our office, we just can automatically send them their assessment sheet.
Great.
We just do it through the email, um, that way they know where we stand, and they can let us know if there's, there's adjustment that needs, they feel needs.
And again, I emphasize, I hear nothing but good things about the level of service you and Ms. Lane provide, so thank you for that.
We try, we try.
And she does have a new staff member.
Yes, I do, I, I hired Dave Justice, um, so he's my second deputy, um, and I'm hoping he wants to stay a while. Um, and then the other point that, that you brought up was, um, changes in, at least I believe you did, you know, new construction. When it comes to new construction, building permits that come through out of the reassessment cycle, um, Wingate Appraisal has left me a manual that I follow religiously. You know, it, it tells me how to judge different buildings based on material and, and features and all these things, and besides that, once I put an item into the system, the formulas that they've set up are there, so they, you know, I give it a certain amount of information, but the formulas that are appropriate are applied by the system that has been set up by the reassessment team. So I do my best, and I, you know, I, I need a, a critique, critique from Skip Willett to see how well I did, because I, you know, I, I appreciate guidance whenever, whenever possible, but.
It's an important point for people to understand that, uh, new construction that happened last year or five years from now, that's valued on these rates today. And so they'll begin to see some things that are skewed in the market perhaps, if, if the market value of that new construction might be 10% higher in five years than it is today, but it's still done against today's rates with this assessment for that equalization standpoint.
Exactly, so any other questions for me?
Well, I have a general question, um, we've had the luxury of going for six years, I think twice in a row, without, with, uh, between assessments. But there is a, a trigger, right, that, uh, if, if, if the values rise a certain percentage, then we have to have one earlier than six years.
Correct.
What, what is that percentage?
Is that 30% off? Um, I, I would have to look at that, I, I'm not sure.
When the, uh, the median ratio falls below 70%?
Yeah, so it's.
It, um, I believe it has to do with, um, now, I'm hesitant to speak on this because I, I'm, I'm, that's what I perceive the, the process to be, but, please don't quote me. Uh, the, uh, the funding that you may receive from, uh, from some state, on some state levels through the composite index, I think factors into this, uh, this threshold of, of, uh, 70% of the median ratio. Once it falls below that, then you, then it's probably in everyone's best interest, your taxpayers included, to, to order.
To have a reassessment, and that could go all the way down to like one year in between, uh, reassessments?
Okay, always do annual.
Right, yeah.
If the market's moving that fast.
You would likely have, you would likely have a staff, if you're doing annual, you'd have in-house staff doing it, it'd just be a constant churn of a jump.
And then conversely, there's.
Certain odds, we had one where it's a four-year and another where it's a three-year. Cause there was so much movement in the market during that.
Yeah, and then conversely, it doesn't work the other way if values go down, yeah. Okay, well, hopefully we'll stay on the same path.
I, I just have one last question, I was just looking at the summary of the, the variables out, that go into this. So you, you have a sample size, median ratio, coefficient of dispersion, price-related differential. Is there any reality check done at the end of all of this? Do you take a look at the big picture?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, absolutely, because one of the things that we know is, you know, if you look at our data set, and that's what, that's what we're looking at, is from this year's data. Now, also you've got to bear in mind, we, uh, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, we had data through August, or did we have data through September?
Through September, I believe.
Okay, through September, so there's the last quarter of this year that we have basically that sale data to, to reference this against, and we, we understood the way, the trajectory of the market to be, that, you know, we're gonna go ahead and, and, and have that median ratio above 100% and be very comfortable with that, because some of that data occurred back in January, February of this year, and March, and things got a little different during the middle of the year. So we were very comfortable that the 101% median ratio, which is what your, your packet shows, uh, was, was reasonable. And then the other test here is that, I mentioned earlier that the Department of Taxation does your, your median ratio study, uh, as they do for all localities, and that came in at around 93% for last year's data. So you think, well, okay, 93% gets to me, you know, and we're talking just in, in mass here, we're moving that to 100%. That would take at least, well, over 7% to move that up, and then whatever happened from this year forward would be another seven or eight percent. So the 15% that I talked to you about earlier, uh, as the, as just a comparison between the old and the new, uh, seems reasonable, so the test of reasonableness does come into play here.
Yeah, I mean, really, this has been a shock, and I just hope that you all, and I know you're professionals and good at your job, I just hope you're seeing the forest for the trees, because, um.
Let me also say that we just got, we just completed a, a reassessment project in Scott County, I was just sharing with Mary, and we had a 30% in six-year movement. Now, that's, that's a real shock. That's a real shock right there.
And what'd you say the movement was here, 15%?
Yeah.
15%.
We, we don't really like to dwell on that number, because everyone's assessment performs differently.
Yeah.
For a lot of reasons, and, uh, you know, if, if that number goes out and says, and everybody says, well, the 15%, I didn't get a 15% change in my assessment, therefore it's gotta be wrong, that's not necessarily the case.
The ones that I were, uh, I was questioning on were like 22%.
Mm-hmm, very possible.
And 15 would have probably not triggered a phone call.
Mm-hmm.
22 did.
Yeah.
Is the, the situation where people were moving down or out of cities to, to come into rural America and, um, people were having bidding wars on homes, I mean, is this a situation where it was, uh, we shouldn't have had an assessment during the craziness, or, um, will it balance out later?
Right, I guess the six-year, the six-year maximum, which is the maximum state allows in between reassessments.
Bad time.
So you really didn't have a choice. Uh, I will say this, though, regarding the, the velocity of the market, and we kind of keep it out on the indicators, like the interest rate and the, and the, uh, the days-on-market type indicators and that sort of thing. And while, you know, we were seeing back around, you know, June, July, and August, uh, prices, um, you know, the ratio of, of price being paid over asking price was above 100%. I mean, the people were paying more for what properties were being advertised for, just ignored to get them. And that has somewhat softened. Now, I'm not saying the prices are dropping, I'm just saying that, that number has started to soften. Days-on-market are starting to draw out a little bit more, could be because we just don't have any inventory, and there's just not a lot of inventory in the market right now. So I don't, I don't exactly wanna make a prediction based on that, but we're seeing a little bit of the velocity come out of the market.
Supervisor Smith?
I mean, I think I had a similar, uh, thought to yours, uh, Chairman Donahue, which is that possibly in the future, you know, if we're at the five-year part, the five-year mark and things are nice and stable, uh, we might not want, six or seven years before we do an assessment, it might be better to be proactive in the future, but I think certainly no unsolved current circumstances coming, um, but I think there is certainly a lesson to be learned.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your efforts. So for the citizens listening in, what's next in the?
Uh, the, as, as noted, the Board of Equalization will be seated by the Circuit Court, uh, so it's not appointed by this board, it's appointed by the court. Uh, there's an agenda item later on, uh, with some code references relative to size and whether there's an alternate or not, and, uh, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but, uh, the next step is for that body to be seated. It will hold hearings, just like the assessor held hearings, and people can, uh, come in and, uh, suggest that the value's not accurate for, uh, market value.
All right, thank you.
Uh, and then, I guess importantly, uh, well, we shouldn't dwell on the 15%, uh, because that's pre-hearings and pre-Board of Equalization. Uh, when the Board of Supervisors, when you advertise your FY23, uh, tax rates, the Code of Virginia requires you to advertise an equalized tax rate, that tax rate that would bring the same amount of revenue that you would get from the old assessed values. And so, um, and if you choose not to, uh, go with that equalized tax rate, then there's even more hoops for the locality to jump through in a longer time and much more orderless public hearings. Uh, so it's, it's very, very likely that the tax rate for FY, for next calendar year that will apply to FY23 will be quite a bit less than what we have now, and just on the margin, 15% less. But, you know, that'll all work out in the long run.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Introduction of new county website?
I don't wanna spend too much time on this, uh, Ms. May was gonna come over, but we'd have some staffing disruptions today, uh, but if you haven't had an opportunity to, to see, the county website's been updated, I encourage everybody to go take a look. Uh, it is a work in progress, uh, but, uh, Mr., uh, um, uh, Mr., uh, let's see, McCaslin and Mr. Christopher both provided, uh, some photographs for us, and we thank them for that, and a good representation of our community. Uh, there is, in addition to a different presentation, there is more information. Uh, many of the local departments and constitutional officers now have pages, whereas they did not before. All the same information is there before. A lot of times when people come to our website, they really just wanna know about, uh, the meeting information, um, when, uh, the meetings are going to happen, and then the county code. Those are easily accessible from the right as well, a couple of other items, so, like I said, I don't wanna dwell on this, but please, uh, take a look, let us know what you think, if there are things that you think should be added. Um, just let Lauren or I know, and we can take care of it.
Thanks a lot.
If you let me know, I'll let Lauren know. But, uh, she did a fantastic job, and she really deserves credit.
That's great, thank you.
Please thank her for us, it's professional, it's attractive, it's easy to use, um.
But it satisfies, there's a couple other legal requirements, and, um, these websites are supposed to be ADA accessible, and, uh, the last one wasn't, uh, this is.
Good.
So, uh, that's important.
Very nice. All right, we are moving into the public comment period. Um, anyone wishing to speak, if you would please. Anyone wishing to speak, if you would please come up to the mic, let us know which district you're in and your name, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sally Morgan. I'm a resident of Gidran Hollow, which is Hampton District, and I'm also co-chair of the Rappahannock County Behavioral Health Roundtable along with Eve Brooks. So I'm here today to advocate for Eve's reappointment to the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services Board. I will tell you, I worked for Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services for 35 years, and I know a lot about what a complex organization it is and what important work they do. And I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 350 employees now with $35 million budget, staff that range from cooks to psychiatrists, services in substance use, mental health, developmental disabilities, aging, they have a transportation system. So it's a lot to learn. And it's, it's a pretty big investment to be a member of that board. Eve has invested three years of her time learning, really aggressively, I would say, learning about all of those complexities. She has moved into leadership roles. She's currently the vice president and, and is poised to be nominated as, as president of the board if she's reappointed. But most importantly to me, she has made a huge difference in what's available in Rappahannock County. A couple of years ago, she suggested that we gather a group of Rappahannock citizens to talk about what they, what the perceived needs are in the community, what the Community Services Board is providing, what could be done differently, what could be done better. And as a result of that, we formed this Behavioral Health Roundtable. For those of you who may not know that term, behavioral health combines mental health and substance use. So we've been meeting for, for two years, every month, and I'll tell you, it's a really dynamic group of people. Dr. Grimsley comes, Debbie comes to those meetings, the department, Director of the Department of Social Services, Director of the Community Services Board, mental health providers, gosh, the Benevolent Fund, the Headwaters. It's, it's really an active group of people. And we've, we've done some really great things. I'd love to come back and tell you in more detail about that, but just a, a couple of things. I, I think the school, the great things Dr. Grimsley has led, led the schools in doing came out of, amid some of those initial discussions about what we needed in the community. So now children can get mental health counseling right there in the school facility, which means their parents don't have to find a counselor somewhere else and transport them, take them out of school. So that, having a social worker at the schools, all of those ideas came out of our discussions. We also have partnership between Childcare and Learning Center and Community Services, where now they're offering parent-child interaction therapy there at CCLC for, for young children. We've got substance use peer activities growing out of the group. So lots of positive changes for Rappahannock County citizens, and I would lay a lot of that at the feet of Eve Brooks, who really has been a driving force behind making those things happen. I, I hope we have other qualified folks who are interested in joining the, the board at some time because you want a pipeline. It really is important work, and you want people interested and primed, and for folks who are interested, it'd be great for them to start learning about the organization, you know, before they even apply. But there will be other openings in the future, but I would say for right now, it would be a real disservice to Rappahannock County residents not to take advantage of someone with, who has a background in mental health, who's invested all that time, and has real leadership abilities and beyond all of that, real vision to see how things can be made better. I hope you'll consider that favorably. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steph Ritter. I'm from the Wakefield District, Kier Madonnahey, and I just want to support Eve's application or reappointment for the board as well. The, if you've been to the CCLC, there's now a special room for kids and parents so that kids can, and the parents can be observed. There's mental health services at the public schools. You know, Eve has provided a really clear and persuasive voice for Rappahannock on the board, and I know she will continue to do so, especially as chair of the CSA. And it would really be a shame to not have her talent and motivation and intelligence on that board. And there are two vacancies which are coming up on, on the, on the same board in the next year or two, so that other applicants would have a chance to serve on the board at a later time. So thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Shield, Gressinger, Hampton District. Just a little change of pace. In the newspaper, I think it was just this week, they did a story about real estate, and I want to call your attention to a sort of buried halfway through, and I think it was Alan Zyswick, don't know if I can pronounce his name correctly, said that there seemed to be a trend now, that it used to be the majority of people coming out here were the retired folks, but he said he was seeing younger families because of COVID, that there was a benefit, that people were looking to actually change their residence because they could work from home now. And so he was seeing families with children, which I think is magnificent. And I would, I, I'm hoping that 2022 is going to be a fabulous new direction for us and in a hopeful way. And then the other thing, so that's why I brought this picture. This was in the Wall Street Journal last year, and they were talking about people finding a different home in a different state. But this could apply to us because it's showing a family, which I think is important and was something we need. Then the other thing, a couple of years ago, we went to North Carolina, and I found a cartoon in the newspaper, and it was a man who was having a nightmare. And he was surrounded by seed catalogs, and his wife was saying, oh my gosh, you're having a nightmare. And he said, oh, it's the weeds that are here. And so I want to reiterate that there is an element of weeds, I think, in our county of people who are saying, you can't do this, we don't want this. And I would hope that we would be able to choke those weeds out and, and look for a healthy harvest in the, in the time to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Ramos, Piedmont District. I had the pleasure last week of attending the Library Board of Trustees meeting as a member of the public. And so this is not any kind of paid advertisement or anything, but I just want to keep a bug in you all's ear that they are very ardently committed to creating a bigger, better library in our future. And I hope that you all will join them in your ardent commitment to help them out in any way, shape, or form we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy Dietl from Wakefield District, and I want to join the chorus of Sally Morgan and Stephanie Ritter in encouraging you to reappoint Eve Brooks to the Community Services Board. I don't know, but for the record, I'd like to just note that this is someone who has incredible, not only local experience, but national experience. She was the president and CEO of the National Association of Child Advocates, and the work there included healthcare access for children, welfare, juvenile justice, child welfare. She was also the ED of the Public Charter School Center for Student Support. And as both Stephanie and Sally have mentioned, she's had incredible experience bringing a very innovative and collaborative program to CCLC that works with children and families that we've been trying to get for a number of years. And thanks to Eve's leadership, it's now there and up and running and is getting a lot of, a lot of interest from the community. She also is one of the founders of Rapid Home. So a Community Services Board does not only deal with children, it also deals with the elderly. And that program has absolutely mushroomed in the last couple of years. It's, it's taken on a whole new life in the last six months, and it's thanks to Eve for introducing the whole idea of a village in this community for the elderly. Finally, I just want to sort of point out that she is not only a leader and an innovator and an advocate, but she is also a doer. And we need doers in this community. And when she sees something, she steps up and she acts. And that, I think, is a phenomenal skill, and we need to have people like Eve in positions of leadership and willing to put their time and their treasure into programs like the Community Services Board that reaches so many people in our, in our county. So I hope that you all will give an unanimous endorsement for her reappointment, and thank you.
Thank you.
Geneva Welch, Hampton District, Debbie's district.
Actually, Wakefield.
Wakefield.
Wakefield. What did I say? Hampton.
Roger Welch is back there. He'll correct.
I know. I didn't plan on being here today, but I got a phone, a phone call this morning, and in the paper, you know, we did the article on CenturyLink. And I'm wondering if there's another way to document how many people might be out there that this affects, because we had five emergency ambulance visits to the hospital this year where we had to call for help. And in my situation, without repeating everything that was in the paper, we have two phone lines that come to the house, and our internet is with CenturyLink. So, you know, I, we were uncovered for three weeks. And the phone call that I got this morning was a lady that started out, I guess this was from the newspaper, and she must have looked up in the phone book or something and found my name, and said she wanted to talk to me about our mutual friend, CenturyLink. And wouldn't give her name because she was afraid that she would be somehow penalized. She is in her 90s, and it sounds like she has phone and internet with CenturyLink. And she talked about being without service for two months. Two months. And told me about an incident where her children were trying to reach her, and I think the sheriff came to her house because, they called him because they hadn't heard from her. And she told me about wires that lay on the top of the ground that she and her neighbor had discovered. How many people are there out there like that? You know, that's, I mean, my story was in the paper, but Kier and Debbie know who this lady is. I, I got her name.
Yeah.
And in her 90s, she's 20 years on us, living like that after two months. I mean, anything could happen. It's, but if, if somehow we could put numbers in the paper that people could call if they were affected, when I was going through this, I called the State Corporation Commission, open chain. I called some agency on aging and disability just to say, because this is abuse, you know, when you can't get services. Rappahannock shouldn't be known for this kind of thing. And I have the little gallery over there on Main Street, and a lady came in this week after she read the article, and she said, I'm just going to move. She said, I can't. This is not the place for me to get, to grow old. So maybe we should try to find out who these people are and, you know, correct, collect data and see what we can do, because it's pretty bad.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Achiel Hampton, it's hard to believe 2021 is almost over. So the first thing I want to do is thank you all for another year of service to the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, to all of us citizens who count on you to shepherd us into a brighter future. Hopefully COVID is behind us, and we can move on with the things we all hoped we were going to do two years ago. But thank you all for your service. Second, I am one of your two appointed, one of your three appointed members of the CSP, and therefore I've spent hundreds of hours with Eve over the last two years, probably know more about CSP than I ever wanted to know. But I can confirm, having been a member of the nominating committee, that Eve is the only nominee of the nominating committee for the next chair, and that given her reappointment, I have every confidence she will be the next chair of the CSP. You probably know because you're Board of Supervisors, but I doubt too many of the members of the public realize it is a five-county organization with a $36 million budget with 400-plus employees that served over 10,000 people last year. Eve will be the chair of that organization. That's not a small thing. Further, for at least the last year, she's been the chair of the program committee that has driven the agenda of the CSP, has brought in a whole new era of cooperation between senior staff and board members, has really transformed her vision for the way a board works with senior staff, partly, if not primarily, initially driven by her almost incensed advocacy that Rappahannock gets its fair share of RRCS services. If you have time run by the Washington School parking lot, you'll see an RRCS minivan now that's parked there so that folks volunteering to transport people don't have to go to Culpeper to pick up the van, come back, do their transportation, then take the van back and drive back. That's just one. Sally Morgan's talked about the innovations at CCLC. It's one of two Medicaid-funded interventions for early childhood issues in our region, and it's in Rappahannock, and there's a RRCS employee who works there two days a week. When I started on the board, there were no RRCS employees that were in the county. And it goes on and on. But for me, those are two huge accomplishments, not alone. There were a couple of others of us advocating for Rappahannock. But enormous changes, and some of you know that this coming year is the 50th anniversary of the RCS, and our chair will be in the forefront in five counties, leading that anniversary celebration. So in addition to thanking you for what I hope will be her reappointment, I want all of you to share in my pride, my satisfaction in knowing that in a short time, by the way, between, she chairs program, I chair Finance Administration, that's two of the three committees, we serve on the Executive Committee. So little Rappahannock, which has 7,300 people, multiply their, add all the people that live in the other four counties, your appointees are working hard on behalf of Rappahannock County and the other folks in all those other counties. So thank you for your, what I hope will be your endorsement and your appreciation for Eve's leadership. Third, you can't help if you read the Rappahannock news or you drive around the county to realize that this boundary line adjustment issue is heating up. I drive past friends and neighbors whose yards now sprouted no boundary line adjustment signs. I can't help but notice that many of those yards used to have a no bike path sign. And as I was thinking about it the other day, I realized there's something that needs to be brought to the public's attention. You all may realize this. This is not a second bike path issue. As far as I'm aware, there's no code provision in Virginia that dictates to a county whether they have to fund out of county money a public recreational bike path. I couldn't find it. You have all sorts of, of direction on how you spend public money, but nowhere does it address a public recreational path. So what that means is, on that issue, it was an entirely local issue to be decided locally, and you all did. The boundary line adjustment's not that way. There are code provisions about boundary line adjustments and annexation, and what's owed by municipalities and jurisdictions to private property owners in the state of Virginia. So before we get too far down this path, I hope everyone's aware that this will not be an issue that necessarily is resolved locally. The code not only provides criteria for what subdivisions have to do, but it provides remedies in the event that any party feels that a town or, or a county or a city didn't abide by the Code of Virginia. or city didn't abide by the Code of Virginia. So, as a taxpayer in the, and a resident of the county, I certainly hope we can find a way for the town and the county to cooperate so that we don't end up in extended litigation that could cost thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars, that might ultimately end up taking this issue, putting it in front of a three-judge circuit court, special panel to adjudicate, rather than having us be able to work through our own issues locally. So, I'm just here to say this is not quite the same thing as the bike path. But again, thank you for your service, especially Mr. Parrish. You will not be sitting behind this table too much longer.
Thank you.
Wow, this is a big public conference.
Madam Chairman and members of the board, and Gary, thank you for that introduction. Uh, I understand that, uh, next month you'll be recognizing Mr. Parrish's service formally. Uh, but I wanted to take this opportunity on this, uh, his last day and as a regular meeting to, uh, give him some of the thanks that I think is, is due and that really none of you get, uh, with the frequency that it really matters. And, uh, and who knows, by January, he might have something else that he's planning to do with his time. So, um, Chris, I just wanted to thank you, uh, first for serving with honor, integrity, uh, you know, uh, honesty, good cheer, and a good sense of humor. I think you take the job seriously, but you don't take yourself too seriously. And that helps keep your ego out of these decisions, so I thank you for that. Second, I want to thank you for being a good listener. Um, I know you listen to me, you listen to others. I've often had to wait for you listening to people as we were trying to get on with a bike ride. And so, I know that you are very open to hearing everyone's input on matters, whether you agree with them or not. And I, I thank you for that. Um, I also thank you for being an independent thinker. I think it's really valuable, and I appreciate that you don't let partisan or national politics or any outside influence, uh, get in the way of your putting the interest of the county first. And I thank you for that. And, uh, for a personal note, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to, uh, serve, uh, the county as your representative to the Planning Commission. So, uh, I know you were, uh, very helpful, I think, to, uh, Mr. Carney's victory. I hope he follows your example, takes a, takes a lesson from your, your model, and, uh, that he continues to seek your advice and guidance and wisdom going forward and that you're willing to provide it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
I just want to thank all of you, and particularly Kier and Chris Parrish and Debbie Donnelly for giving me the time to explain what we are doing with the Community Service Board. I also want to thank each of the people here, Sally, Steph Ritter. Let's see. Betsy and Gary.
Thanks, Shannon.
For, uh, I guess I'm a little short. For, for speaking on my behalf. And, uh, just thank you for taking the time, um, and being available, uh, on these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands in the courtroom. Is there anybody online that wishes to speak during public comment? Not seeing any Zoom hands raised. Um, I will close the public comment period. And that moves us into the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented in, in today's comprehensive agenda, please.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving into appointments.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I had asked if this, uh, particular, uh, vacancy or, uh, a possible vacancy be advertised just to see what the applications may be. And unfortunately, we didn't really get any applications. Uh, and, and Ms. Brooks, uh, I noticed that several people had mentioned all the different organizations that you're a member of, but they forgot one. Maybe several, but at least one that I'm aware of, uh, Rappahannock Resist. Are you familiar with that organization?
It's really an organization, it's a list serve.
It's a, it's a list serve and, uh, I'm, I don't have it with me. I brought it last month, but I neglected to bring it with me today. I've been trying to search my emails for it, but someone forwarded me an email from that where, uh, you made, uh, several disparaging comments about the very public that you wish to serve. Do you remember that? It was right after the--
List serve, there's a lot of comments on that.
But these comments were ones that you made in relation to the December 2019 meeting where the Board of Supervisors had the resolution to, uh, to adopt a Second Amendment resolution. And you made, you made several disturbing comments about the very public that you seek now to be reappointed to serve. Did, do you remember those?
No, precisely.
Yeah, you, you said something about the people there. And I really, I really wish I had brought that with me, but I was busy today and I'm, I'm, I'm not properly prepared. So, I ask y'all's forgiveness for that. But you made a statement to the effect that, uh, that you saw a lot of pickup trucks. I believe you said rusty pickup trucks. I'm not exactly positive about that. But you said that the people there that night that spoke on behalf of that resolution, just wouldn't accept the fact that the Confederate Republicans were a thing of the past and would not go off quietly into the darkness. You don't remember, you don't remember speaking about the people that you--
I didn't remember what you said. I don't remember the content. It's obvious that I didn't know that you were part of that list serve at any rate.
Oh, so you would have heard something different if you were aware that I had access to it?
I don't think so. But I, I really don't think this is relevant to--
No, it is relevant because you made disparaging comments about the very people that may be seeking services from the Community Services Board. And I, I just don't, I don't understand why you would make disparaging comments about people. And then, uh, is there two Eve Brooks that I'm, I'm not aware of, one of them?
Should. This is not a appropriate place for--
Yes, it is. I'm, I'm afraid it is. We have a person, if we make an appointment, this board is basically endorsing that type of behavior when it becomes public knowledge.
Well, with that said, I, I make a motion that we appoint Eve Brooks to the, uh, the, the board that we're talking about, as it is for Community Services--
I'll second, I'll second that motion. And I want to thank Mrs. Brooks for her service and for sitting down and explaining to me the complexity of that organization. I think, um, Ms. Morgan emphasized how complex it is, the number of employees. And I think we all, um, we all as citizens, including members of this board, appreciate our right to free speech. And I think we're all adults and can compartmentalize, uh, political views from serving the public and serving in positions like this. So, um, thank you for all you do.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just closing comments. I, I appreciate the First Amendment and, uh, and all of that, that, uh, we are the political animals in the county, if there are any. And the statements that we make can be attributed to that. But when we appoint people to nonpartisan positions, their judgment should not be clouded by partisan thoughts and activities. And that's, that's where we are. And if y'all are okay with that, there's not much I can do about it, but I'm not gonna vote for it.
Any other discussion?
And I just wanted to go on the record. Uh, if I could add something, please?
Yes. Go ahead.
I did go back. I knew there was something, uh, that was sort of a nagging memory, um, that, you know, made me have reservations about this reappointment. And, um, I think in the letter to the editor, Ms. Brooks referred to folks that came out for the 2A, uh, care, uh, two years ago now as mom. So, I mean, we can talk about First Amendment rights, um, but those folks just came out to express themselves as well. So, I, I mean, I, I do think that in these public positions, sometimes you do have to be cognizant of the way you, you speak to, about people. And, um, having sort of been on the receiving end of that issue last year, I, I do, I do have reservations.
Thank you. And I would say, just from my time on the rap, sitting in on the Rappahannock Roundtable, um, discussions, I'm really impressed with the, first of all, the group of people that attends. Um, there's like 30 or 40 people on these calls, and they're all diverse and all caring about the citizens of the, the five counties that are involved. But, um, I've been impressed with your, um, focus on Rappahannock County and your ability to pull people back into, let's not forget, um, Rappahannock. So, although, um, I hear what my peers are saying, I, um, really appreciate your efforts. And I expect, based on this, uh, comment period, that you will take that to heart.
Ms. Donahue, the last thing I'll say is I, I always am grateful for the fact that as members of local governing body, that we run with independent next to our name. And, um, I think that says a lot about how we should operate in this community. And I don't think even an appointment like this, partisanship should come into play. So, again, thank you for your service.
I didn't bring it into--
I, I agree 100% about the partisanship, and that's part of the problem that I'm trying to break light.
That's exactly, you're, you're pointing in the wrong direction, Mr. Whitson.
Okay.
The partisan comments were made by somebody else. I'm just bringing up the light.
All right, I'm gonna close discussion, uh, go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right.
I didn't, I didn't get missed, miss vote.
I vote now.
All right, thank you. Um, moving on to, we have two, uh, boards, the Boards of Appeals and Ag and Forestal, that I don't--
We do have a, we do have an appointee for the Board of Building Appeals. Uh, Mr. Anderson has submitted an application for reappointment. And, uh, you should, uh, quickly accept his application and appoint him.
Yeah, I move, I move that we reappoint, uh, Mr. Anderson to the Board of Building Appeals. And I believe that is for a-- Oh, I'm sorry. It's a four-year term.
Yes, it's a four-year--
Four-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
There is still a vacancy on that board, so if you, as you're out and about, please, uh, let people know about that. And as Chair Donahue noted, there is one opening on the Agriculture and Forestal District Advisory Committee. And, uh, the only prerequisite is that you are a landowner. Uh, we do not have any applications for that.
All right. Um, moving into old business, we have the Courthouse Historic Window Restoration Purchasing Award. Mr. Curry, I think--
Uh, board members may recall that at your last meeting, um, I informed you that I had to extend the bid window for this, uh, project an additional two weeks and didn't have anything for you to consider. Uh, I, I did that, and we did receive one bid. However, it was very high, much higher than the, uh, earlier estimate that was received and, uh, higher than our established budget. The Code of Virginia, uh, Section 2.2, 4318, does allow, uh, me as the purchasing, uh, agent to negotiate with the low bidder when it exceeds our budget. Uh, and I wanted to engage the board and to see how you wanted to move this forward. I did talk to the Building Committee about it, and they were, um, uh, they were of a mind that this probably was too much to award for this project. This is to remove all these windows in this building, send them off and have them rebuilt. We didn't talk about the negotiation part at that point. I do have a couple other firms that possibly could do the work, uh, if we could engage them to be, uh, to be interested. So, my, my recommendation is, uh, for the board to consider authorizing me to negotiate with this sole bidder to see if we can get a scope and fee that are agreeable. And if I fail at that, then, uh, I'll have to go back out to bid. I just don't know what that dollar value might be. I think the quote was, uh, around, I believe, $38,000, $39,000. And the bid came at $63,900.
So, you're asking for us to authorize you to continue negotiations?
Well, basically, uh, negotiations and make an award up to a certain dollar value.
What's that dollar value?
That is the question, yes. And it, it's a function of how long do we want to take to get this project done?
Mr. Fraser, any, any idea?
I don't know. The problem is, uh, if we, if we set a dollar figure between, you know, the 49 and 63, then that's exactly where people are gonna want to be, uh, negotiating.
Right.
But that's basically the, the price range. We had a, I guess, off-the-cuff quote of $39,000. And, and the bid came in about 50% higher, so-- I, I think that we should authorize Mr. Curry to just continue with it. We, we have, I think, what is it, two, you, you had two contacts?
We had, there were two contractors that, uh, we engaged. One said they just don't have the capacity to do it. And then the subsequent information we received from others that are working with them confirmed that they don't have the capacity to do the work, and it's taking a very long time for them on their project. Uh, this company at Lexington that did give us a bid, uh, is very capable to do the job, and they do much bigger jobs than this. There might, might be a couple others out there, but we have to get them interested. It's a very specialized area of work.
Absolutely.
I would defer to you. How do you wanna?
Well, this is one of those things where I'm gonna defer to Gary. I, I think that we should, we should just, uh, authorize him to continue, uh, negotiation and, and reach out to one or two of these other new, uh, points of contact that he may have. Uh, one of our other members, Dale Waters, is, uh, is involved in this type of work on a regular basis. And, and he has some contacts, I believe, that--
And Mr. Waters did provide those, those to me. Um, so if, if there's a ceiling that you think is appropriate, I can work on that. If I can't get there with, with OCI, then I'll just go out, back out to bid.
So, can, can we offer a generic motion just to continue negotiations in this regard without any dollar?
I think that's a default action.
Okay, that's--
So, what would be needed for me to sign an agreement, I'd need an award of some sort. And so, that could be some sort of contingent award by the board, up to some dollar amount. But absent that, um, yeah, I'll just be generally negotiating.
I have a general question. During this restoration, uh, would that preclude, uh, our, uh, the board meeting here?
No. And what would happen is all these windows would be taken out. And in, in their place would be basically translucent material and a temporary frame.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, uh, for probably three, four months. And then when it's all done, it'll come back and swap it back in.
I guess put forth the motion that, uh, we authorize Mr. Curry to, uh, negotiate up to the $63,000 limit so that we can keep this thing moving.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just say, I think there was, um, that, that somebody that spoke, I think $63,000, not $6,300.
It's $63,900. Uh, maybe I was, lost a syllable there possibly.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have a vendor want to do that.
All right, so we have the $63,900. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Century Link. Mr. Whitson, I think you and Mr. Curry should start this off, because I got in late in the game.
Gary?
Go ahead.
Uh, as the board is well aware, going back to 2018, when, uh, the Public Safety Committee, I believe it was Mr. Fraser and Ms. Smith, really stoked a fire under, um, local ability to try to drive some change with what was happening with, um, poor repair, um, resolution in the field from Century Link and Verizon. That led to us, staff and, uh, some board members meeting with representatives from both companies. And, uh, that was really successful because anybody who's called one of the phone companies know, for a service issue, knows that you get into a, an automated system, and you have to try to get a ticket, and it's, it's really arduous. And, uh, so the output of those meetings was to identify relatively local humans who we could talk to and escalate, uh, service issues to. That's been very effective with Verizon. Uh, it's been less so effective with Century Link. And part of the problem with that is that there's been a lot of turnover in the positions in Century Link. We used to have a service contact located in Front Royal. And that position turned over a couple times, and since hadn't been refilled. And now, our service-- over a couple times, and since hadn't been refilled, and now our service contact is in Pennsylvania. We had a government affairs representative who we had engaged and met a few times. That person left the company, and now that government affairs is combined with Virginia and North Carolina, and was just appointed not too long ago, didn't even know who it was. Long story short, we don't have that good escalation path to a human who can intervene on our behalf, when we have protracted issues like the one that happened here recently in the Wakefield District and many other locations. You've seen in my monthly reports that for CenturyLink, it's been six to ten days easy on a rolling basis for CenturyLink to be able to quote a service date for somebody who calls in, when on the phone, this, just this last week, when myself and Chair Donahue and Supervisor Whitson engaged with the CenturyLink leaders, the current slate, they told us that their goal is to make repairs in one to two days. And, and it was, if it weren't so sad, it was comical that they thought that that was what they could do, because we know that that's not been possible in a very long time. During that phone call, they talked a very convincing argument that they had the right people on the phone and were going to provide us a list, a renewed list of contacts to, through, to whom we could escalate concerns. They were going to send us a form that citizens could use to register that they're medically dependent on the telephone system, like a Life Alert-type thing. Since that time, we've received nothing. We've increased our engagement with the State Corporation Commission, and we continue to continue to escalate on that end. We did learn on the phone that the proposed sale of the landline telephone system in this area from what is part of the CenturyLink organization to Apollo, who, to a service that would be called Bright Speed, is moving forward, and there is a current SCC case on that, to which we, locally citizens and the local governing body can provide comments. And so we do believe it's important for us to provide comment on that case, and hopefully have the SCC put some teeth into whatever agreements are in place between passing that jurisdiction over, to make sure there's enhanced responsibilities and requirements for this legacy landline problem. Other than that, all we can really do is be the very squeaky wheel and go straight to the SCC every single time there's a problem, because the, the leadership who was on the phone talks great on that call a week ago, but has been silent since then.
This new company, does it have any experience at this?
Well, I don't know if it's good or bad. Many times when these, these sort of changes happen, there's a phone system handed off from one telephone company to another telephone company. According to the CenturyLink representatives, this new company is, is a brand-new telephone company. So, hard to say. Apparently, they're going to invest billions of dollars in infrastructure. If I were a betting person, I would say that infrastructure is going to go to where they get the most return, which is likely the more dense areas of their, their system, which is probably not here. So we need to continue pushing on this, and it does, we need to push on the SCC, push on CenturyLink, Bright Speed, whoever will listen. But when we have alternative options to get connectivity to homes, and hopefully we'll be successful with the VATI program, we need to be pushing that as well, because I don't have faith in the landline company at all. And I just want to end with, Verizon has been a great partner. They do have issues, like every other landline company, but when we have those issues, we call a local person, and that local person takes local technicians and gets them to the scene and figures out the problem. When we have issues with CenturyLink, we call somebody out of town, and generally, some out-of-town tech has to come help the local tech, because there just aren't enough people to go around.
I mean, I'll say two things. One, thinking of CenturyLink with the name Bright Speed, I don't know if it's irony or comedy or both. Second thing, this morning, I woke up to a message from one of, I call them the Group of Eight residents in Harris Hollow, whose landline was down again, and I didn't even have to call, well, I could not call any of the other people, because they were out, but I sent a text message, and I sent a Facebook message to other members of this Group of Eight residences that all seemed to go out at the same time, and I said, "I trust that your landline is not working this morning." And they said, "You are right." So one person notifies me, and it's the same group of people who are all down. And so to Mr. Curry's point, who do we contact? And, I mean, I've tried for most of the summer, going, frankly, going back to last spring, just working with our local technician, who's been great. And I simply contact him, and I say, "Hey, Jesse, can you get into our hollow today?" So I've tried to circumvent the entire bureaucracy to get things done, and even that's not working anymore. And no fault of his own, but I think that they are increasingly reluctant to respond to our, our spot request for service. And so even in our effort to circumvent the bureaucracy, they've somehow bureaucratized even that avenue for us to remedy these spot calls, like this morning. And when this Group of Eight has all gone out collectively, then the question is, oh, what caused it? Well, rain, okay, thunderstorms, lightning. What happened last night? Did it get cold? Did the wind blow a certain direction? I don't know. I mean, this is not stable infrastructure, and there, I'm convinced they will not invest in it. And they, the CenturyLink contact person in Charlottesville, Ms. Staponovich, promised me that they would do an evaluation of the infrastructure in Harris Hollow, so that these eight people wouldn't continue to go out. And she offered during our call that they had looked at it, and there were some funding requests that they would entertain, along with others, for infrastructure upgrades. And I end up in one place, and that's looking ahead one, two, three years down the road. How are we going to guarantee that our citizens on roads like Harris Hollow Road, just as one example, will have connectivity to allow them safe contact with our E-911 system? And the answer to me is, is solid broadband infrastructure. So it is maddening. It is maddening. Thank you.
The only reason, really, that I got involved in this, because I knew you and Mr. Curry and Lauren had been working so hard on this, was when I spoke with Janita and found out that she was part of, you know, a box was mowed over, so it could have been a hundred people out for, went down on November 3rd, and we got up the night of November 16th, because I actually drove and talked to the contractor, who was sitting on the side of the road, working on this box in the middle of the night, who had driven from Louisa County to fix the problem, was going to be there for quite a period of time, and then having to drive back home. So that's when I got involved, because I had multiple people that needed to be able to rely on the fact that they could pick up their phone and dial 911. This is not just the frustration of the citizen, it also impacts our Sheriff's Department, because if they can't reach people, they're sending out a deputy. We have multiple years, who knows, hopefully only two, where fiber is going to be to the home. How are we going to take care of our citizens in this two-year period? And I do not like to be able to say, "Sorry, copper's dying, it's not going to be here." But even on the call the other day, they basically said, "Fiber to the home's going to be the answer." And what do we do in this two-year period of time? I would hope that every citizen in our area that is having CenturyLink issues, sorry, Mr. Curry, document what the woman from SCC told me, which is your telephone number, your address, the time that you submitted a ticket to CenturyLink, and she wants to know how long it took that ticket to actually, the repair to actually occur. And if we can submit that information to the county office and submit it, as Sherry from the SCC said, to them as comments for the case of their spinoff, at least we will have been heard, because right now, I feel like there's a small group of people in CenturyLink that are hearing us, and that's about it. Thanks to the newspaper, it's there. But please document, I go to chat now instead of calling, because at the end of a chat with CenturyLink, you get a synopsis of your, you basically get the chat history, so it's all documented, and I will be submitting my two-week outage, two-and-a-half-week outage, and all of that to the county, to be submitted to the SCC. So please do the same. Any other comments? Thank you for coming today.
I'm just wondering, when was the last time we brought this issue to delegate Revert, State Senator Ovechkin, you know, other folks that might be able to help us?
Those, those folks were all invited to be on the call, and Senator Ovechkin's staff was on the call with us and, and is engaged. So we are bringing them along, and in the communication that we have back and forth with CenturyLink, making sure they are copied, hopefully so they can share our frustration with the rest of their constituents, and perhaps engage a broader group of people to, to take this route. But also, if they have any influence whatsoever over the company, that they can wield that as well.
Yeah, Ms. Smith, this is Kier. Jenny Olger in Senator Ovechkin's office has been basically alongside me all summer long through the, the primary outages with which I've been dealing. So she's been great.
She's copied in, Mr. Curry, on your reply to them, not their lack of replying to your email.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Water Resources Protection and Monitoring.
Others, I don't think there's much to-
I think just want to add to that there is a Public Safety Committee meeting tomorrow evening, and I may or may not be able to attend if someone else wants to go and talk about this in public safety.
We did, Mr. Poulster did ask for this item to be on the agenda, just to brief that body and make sure they know where everything else stands, and so they can assist in this journey.
Well, if one of the more engaged supervisors would prefer to attend, just let me know.
Will do.
Will talk.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, Water Resources, anything new?
Nothing, nothing new. I, I will be following up with Mr. Whitson, who's our rep on the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, and determine from him or Eldon or what is happening with the gauges and how we need to reengage, and hopefully have Mr. Poulster take the lead on that.
Reengage on the gauges?
Yes.
Yeah, well said.
The gauge happening.
An engaging topic.
New business. Town of Washington requests post office temporary footpath.
Yes. Mr. Mayor Catlin reached out to me a month ago or so. We've chatted a few times over the probably last year about the town's interest to extend walking paths to the new post office location, and sidewalk eventually, and that's a protracted process.
Yeah.
And it will take some time if, to happen, particularly if they end up going after a TAP grant, which is the eighty-twenty money available for multimodal improvements. So he's asked whether the county would be willing to allow what amounts to a temporary footpath to cross county property. There's an attachment and, that shows the general layout of where they envision this path to go. I, and apparently, there's remnants of an old footpath in some of these areas, and there's some photographs in this document that show that. I let Mr. Mayor Catlin know that should the board be interested in this, they would need to understand that, one, it's temporary, because the, the building committee is working on different alternatives on how to potentially leverage this parcel, and there wouldn't be a permanent easement granted. Speaking for the board, I assume that was your position. And, two, it would be non-exclusive, so if, if something is, is determined here, it wouldn't preclude the county from using it in a parallel or similar use. That said, if the board is okay with some sort of agreement or right of entry, I'm not sure what the right form of agreement would be, myself and Mr. Goff can work on that for what amounts to a stone-type path, which would probably look something like-
Yep.
That.
Yep.
And bring something back to the board for future meeting consideration to hit those points that are non-exclusive, temporary, your thirty-day notice sort of thing, or something that's in our way, and you need to either move it, or it's going to be interrupted. If the board has any other particular points you would want in agreement, or are just not interested, let me know that, and we'll save some time.
Okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and put forward a motion, authorize the county administrator and county attorney to develop a draft agreement in this regard with the Town of Washington, which would ultimately authorize the construction of a footpath over county property to be considered by the board at a future meeting. And I think that one thing that's, that we should highlight here is our county employees, who have been without a post office to go to, would most directly benefit from this walking path once the post office opens, and I hope I didn't just jinx us there. So I think it's a, it's a direct benefit to our county employees, and, and for that, I'm comfortable putting forward that motion.
It is temporary.
It's temporary, too, yeah.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just, I, I'm not sure that this is at all a very good idea. I mean, and I do think, before we take any action, that we should talk to some of our subcommittees, and also the Sheriff's Department, and ask for their feedback on any kind of construction like this on the Courthouse property. I think it should go to the building committee for an opinion, and I think it should go to the Public Safety Committee for an opinion, and I think we should definitely solicit the Sheriff's opinion on this, because while I understand it's a nice idea, being that here in Sperryville, we have a bridge that's county property, that requires maintenance and keeping tabs on, there are a lot of concerns that come along with any kind of structure. And I, I have a lot of questions about building something like this and maintaining something like this, and I'm, I'm just reluctant to proceed without additional details or opinions from, from some of the folks that are going to be involved in the process.
Mr. Curry, all those details certainly could be worked out once we get a draft agreement. Is the action today simply to authorize you to-
Yeah, just get it drafted.
Work out an agreement, go in, and then at that point, we can, and I think Ms. Smith raises valid points, we can bring everyone in to talk about all those details, maintenance, safety, disruption.
I'm just not sure why we would authorize staff to work on something that we're not sure we want to do.
That is a valid point. I was, I'm, I'm kind of leaning in the direction of asking the sheriff, you know, what she thinks about safety on the issue, because that was a, she tried to, to stay out of the political part of that bike trail, but there was a lot of safety concerns that, that were not being looked at with that, and I think this could be a similar situation.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a question of, do we at least start the process, so we get more information and more details about what the project's going to look like, so we can have a valid discussion surrounding something tangible or not? It's a chicken and egg question. So I've made a motion, I don't know if anyone seconded it.
Mr. Parrish did.
Mr. Parrish did.
I just think that staff find us money, and I don't want to waste money having staff work on something that we're not all on board with.
Okay. We have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Board of Equalization.
Board discussed this briefly earlier in the meeting. Code of Virginia, Section 58, 13374, sets the Board of Equalization, it's ranging from three to five members, and five being the number, because that's the number of board members we have. I believe in the past, it's been three members. It also provides the opportunity to have an alternate. And Ms. Graham and I believe that it would be in the interest of the board to request the court to appoint a three-member body plus an alternate, so that you can have the most efficient hearing process possible and not have- and not have perhaps a series of BOE meetings or hearings canceled because one member is not available. We think that's the most flexible, and the way the code is set up is it's at the request of the local governing body. So what I'm seeking is a request that the board authorize me to send a letter to the court on your behalf, asking them to appoint a three-member body with an alternate.
I think that's a good idea, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any discussions, sorry? It seems to make sense to me. All right, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Women in Government Resolution.
I was contacted by a member of this Reflect U.S. group who requested the board to appoint a resolution seeking to increase the representation of women in local government. There's a report attached, and they provided a sample resolution. That resolution was used as the basis to develop the proposed resolution that is attached. I'll say that the sample resolution dug more into politics than probably I thought this board would be interested in, and so in preparing this resolution, if the boards have a mind to adopt it, this is more objective and identifies the fact that the population in the country, et cetera, is about 50/50 split, and so it makes sense for there to be a similar split in representative government, either elected or appointed. And we do a pretty good job here when you put those numbers all together. If you look at the Board of Supervisors, School Board Planning Commission, BCA, you're at about 40%. If you start adding in groups like the Library Board or Social Services, those numbers go quite a bit further up, higher towards 50%. So I thought this was a reasonable statement for the board to make, that you felt that the intent of, that Rappahanna County Board of Supervisors commits to continuing efforts to recruit women to serve on local boards and commissions with the intent of women being represented in approximately equal numbers with men on those appointments. It's a pretty easy thing to say. If the board wants to take action on such a thing today, it's ready and available for you to do so. If you want to modify it or not, then you can do that as well.
And not to mention our constitutional officers up and down courthouse row.
Right.
Nearly all women.
That is true.
Yeah, and I assume they're part of local government.
Sure.
Yeah.
We want to, I mean, I really don't know why this would be necessary, because we try, at least sometimes it seems like we try to appoint people based on qualifications, not...
Sure. And there was, their sample included things like wanting to report out and, but to who and who, it's really, I viewed it as a reminder to yourselves that you want, you want the local bodies to be equally represented at the end of the day, and that doesn't mean every, every group, and it depends on what the group is, but when you look through this statistical lens, you already do this pretty well.
Yeah, I don't see the word "necessary."
I would just have, I think it's fine, I just would have a general comment about these, what seem like non-local resolutions, and I feel like they're increasing, the frequency of them is increasing, and I, I guess I would like to have an early heads-up when we get requests like this, and perhaps I missed that early heads-up. And again, the resolution substantively is fine with me, it's just we've, we've done everything from First Amendment to, we almost did a resolution for a group of Chinese following gong members, and I just think we, we should be focused on local issues as much as possible. And I think embedded in here is, is good stuff about local government, no doubt, and hopefully, hopefully in this exercise of reviewing this resolution, reflecting upon it, we recognize that Rappahanna County has many women in positions of leadership included on this local governing body, so I think it's worthwhile, but I would, I would just think we should all pause in the future when we look at non-local resolutions, because I don't want our local governing body to be sort of out there for national causes when we have plenty to do here at home, so. But I think it's symbolically important, so.
Would you be interested in making a motion?
I guess, I don't know about you all, did you don't look at the website for this organization that sent the email?
I did not, no.
I just, I mean, I sort of agree with Mr. Whitson. I think only yet, something from an organization like this, where it hits the agenda, it should be voted on by the board members, and the board members should decide whether or not it hits the agenda. I certainly agree with a lot of the sentiment in the, in the attachment, but I, I'm not sure what the usefulness is in, in the attempt to normalize whether, in these positions, sort of making a special occasion out of it, some people would see as counterproductive, when it should just be normal. And, you know, if you all want to send it to a rules committee, I don't know, I feel very awkward about having this on the agenda, and certainly I would encourage anyone that thinks that they have something to contribute to local government to engage and find their place, we certainly have a lot of openings and needs, and we can always use any talent that folks, at times what folks want to send our way, and we appreciate very much the work of our volunteers, our employees, our constitutional officers, and peers on school board and other bodies, but I'm just not convinced that this is the right way to go about it.
I have to say, I agree, we, Rappahanna County's always had an open mind toward women representing various elected and appointed positions, and not that long ago, the entire town was, including the mayor, were all women, it was 100% women, and for us to vote on something like this may indicate that we are self-correcting, or we have a guilty conscience about the past, or whatever, when we don't. And, and I also agree with Fraser that we got to be careful when big organizations from the outside, you know, start shoving stuff down our throat, so, you know, it doesn't hurt anything, but it doesn't help anything, and it doesn't change anything. So I, I don't, I don't think we need to start entertaining outside interests.
I think, I mean, my view is the resolutions here, I think going forward, we need to correct our process for reviewing sort of resolutions that are imposed upon us, but the resolution is here, and obviously the message in this revised version is benign, so I'll make a motion to adopt it.
For the reasons given, I will second. I am, I do agree, I don't think Rappahanna County has a problem, in fact, I think we do a really good job, and I would say most women in Rappahanna County aren't going to stop to run for something because they think there's an issue, that they won't be voted upon because they're female. So I'm proud of everything this county does, and I think female and male members, citizens are supported 100% on either side. So I agree that it's benign, I agree that it won't necessarily do anything other than show maybe the young ladies in the county, in school, that they are respected and have an opportunity to be up here just like anybody else. So I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, oops, roll call.
I'm so sorry, I did want to make a motion, I do, I would just submit that perhaps we should send this to the Rules Committee for review before we adopt it. I think we've done that with many resolutions in the past, and I think that's good practice.
And to what end? What, what further review, what would further review yield?
Well, I mean, I'm not really sure, but that's what we've always done, we've done that with several resolutions, including the Constitutional County Resolution, we had them work on it, I just think it's, and I mean, has our lawyer looked at this?
It's just so benign, I don't, I don't think we should waste any more time.
No, and that kind of goes to my point about these resolutions, so we can get back to local matters, yeah.
The, the one point that I heard was that, yes, maybe if the young women in this, in the county are kind of tapped on the shoulder, like, hey, you know, you should think about this, maybe it'll help them move forward, whereas otherwise they may not have had the initiative to do that, so.
Yeah.
Like I said, I don't see any...
I think there is a school of thought too, that if you, you know, you make a special payment out of a woman doing something, it's really counterproductive, it should be just what happens every day.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Oh, we have a...
It should be normalization, not elevation.
I agree.
We have a motion and a second, it's a roll call vote, I'm going to start with Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
I reckon.
Mr. Parrish?
I reckon I too.
That's a new...
And I reckon I three, all right, thank you.
Can I amend my vote to say I reckon I? Thank you.
All right, we are Information Reports and Correspondence. Board Committee Reports. Building Committee.
Building Committee, the Building Committee met two weeks ago, and we further discussed the Melner Report with Randy Vaughn from Wiley Wilson, and I think that was about a 45-minute discussion with Randy, and then we had, I forget her name, Amanda?
Amanda, or last name?
With Melner, I believe it was, for about half an hour, and we went into quite a bit of detail with the, the building project here, but with Randy, we dealt with this building, the accessory buildings, and the proposed new project, so we, we had quite a lively discussion going for about two hours altogether. And so we're, we're still working our way through the details.
Thanks for your effort. Before I had to promptly leave and go to jail.
Well, fortunately, fortunately, we all took your call and got you out, so.
Thank you for the efforts, I know that's a challenging one. Recreational Facilities Authority?
We did not meet.
Public Safety Committee?
Public Safety, and the Public Safety Meeting is scheduled for tomorrow.
Rules Committee?
Had not met.
Planning, thank you. Planning Commission update?
Planning Commission, we did have a public hearing related to primitive campsites on a farm winery off of Crest Hill Road, and that, that passed with a recommendation for approval, and that'll come to us, I believe in January, right? That's a special exception permit, and I won't, I won't belabor that point, but we had a pretty robust discussion, given adjoining landowners' concerns about nighttime activity on that farm winery, and I've separately been looking at the broader question of farm wineries with State ABC and researching on my own, but that's for, discussions for a later time, and then we, just an update on the Berkeley Group, the work order, the work order, I believe, is all complete, and so the Berkeley Group, in the new year, will begin their diagnostic on Arizona and subdivision ordinance, the sign ordinance, I believe, is almost ready to go.
Mr. Goff and I have gone through that ordinance, and we have, I guess, a candidate draft ready to submit to the Planning Commission.
So we have, we have some good momentum going into the new year, so, thank you.
Fire Lovey Board did not meet.
They're set to meet January, February.
Anything in the Treasurers' report that you would...
This tax collection time of year, I'll just throw the cash chart up, and you can see, like in every other year, the November collections were steep, deadlines approach, and then cash starts flowing into, into our bank accounts. The sales tax data also, I previously sent that to the board, but just for the public's knowledge, it's lighter blue color, very high sales tax, once again. We, the board continues to recognize that sales tax in your annual budgets, it'll be, I'll be recommending an increase to what you recognize, again, when we do the FY23 budget. It's hard to imagine that in FY19, you were at 51,000, and now it's 82,000 for sales tax. But the difference between that is you, we didn't use to get any revenue from online sales.
Okay.
It's Christmas, shopping.
I think the important point there, and I've certainly been talking to people in the context of, you know, the many inquiries on reassessments, is that we're beginning to see a healthier balance between real property and personal property tax revenue and other, other tax revenue sources, so to see sales tax go over a million, then meals and lodging tax on top of that, resulting from increased tourist activity, I think is good news for local taxpayers in particular, just to see better balance.
There aren't any questions on some of the other items, the, I do want to point out for the board and the public, the notice that was received from CenturyLink regarding the 40826 overlay, we've run out of 540 numbers, phone numbers, and several months ago, there was some discussion, public hearings on how do you handle that? Do you split 540 in half, and half of everybody gets new numbers, or do you overlay a new area code? And there was, the answer is you overlay a new area code. So there's some critical dates that will be coming up, starting in the middle of November, you can now 10-digit dial your neighbor, and it should work. In middle of May, you must dial, 10-digit dial your neighbor, so. And then, beginning in June, your neighbor, if they get a new phone number, might have a number that starts with 826 rather than 540.
So my question is, are, are all the numbers used up, were some of them cellphone numbers, or were they all landlines?
So some were cellphone, everything, any kind of number.
Right, 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 okay.
And I think you said the alternative was, everybody gets a new number, or a lot of people get a new number.
Yeah, half the people get a brand-new number and have to give up their 540 number, or you just do the overlay, and so it seems like across the state, it's happening this way. And, and most of us with a cellphone, we don't know the number anyway, we're just clicking on a name, but they do point out in this release, if you have automatic dialers and things like that, you got to pay attention to them, because as of May 14th, if it doesn't have 10 digits programmed, it's not going to work.
So the spam calling should slow down.
I'm sure they're way ahead of it. The other thing I wanted to point out is there is...
Your car warranty is about to last.
Yeah, there is a price change Comcast listed here, and you can see the information in the packet, all of us who are so fortunate to have Comcast at our homes for television and internet, will have the great opportunity to pay them more money, so that's in there. They're, by law, they have to send those price information.
Thank you. Matters Presented by the Board.
Well, I guess it's been almost a year ago, I made a comment that the Castleton Fire and Rescue Station was dying a slow death, but I'm happy to say I have to eat, I hate those words, their, their membership has quadrupled in the meantime, and it's a real viable station now, all of a sudden, so I'm really, really delighted to report that. They, all these new members, they need training, and I would like to, you know, the county to help facilitate the training somehow or another, you know, with these new volunteers.
Yeah, Mr. Poulster has offered coordinating efforts for training, the association is responsible, and I believe the training officer is Chief Carter right now, to set that training up, and of course, the county, the board, has agreed to fund all that training through operational expense, so, you know, certainly as the board, you are facilitating that to as great extent as possible without stepping on too many toes, and Mr. Poulster has made... And Mr. Pollster has made it well aware that he will assist in any way possible because that's perhaps the most important thing, is to encourage more volunteers. And if we can do that through training, then that's great.
Well, that's fantastic. And also, as a parting shot, I want to reiterate the fact that I do not think that these, I know we haven't talked about it today, but in the past, we've talked about these temporary illuminated signs that go up to indicate what speed people are driving at. And I really don't think it's a good idea, still don't think it's a good idea. I think it's unsightly, it's costly, and I don't think it's going to really solve the problem. So I just wanted to throw that out while I had the chance. Thank you.
So what's the answer, Chris?
The answer is to get the Sheriff, the Sheriff Department involved to, you know, pass out tickets. And, and once people realize that that's going on, they will, they will slow down. That's just my opinion. I'm not going to be around to vote on it, so you help yourself.
You can come to public comment, talk to us about it. Mr. Fraser?
I had a comment or two about the VACO leadership program opportunity. When he first presented it back on 11/19, I believe I said that day or the next day that I have a conflict. But I find out that it may be being held at a local winery?
It's being held after wine hours. Well, there's a half an hour of it. At the Rappahannock Cellars, they have a very large back room that we'll be able to set up in a way that is conducive to conversation and not a one-row Board of Supervisors-only kind of focus. And they offered it to us for no cost, at no cost. And we'll have a separate door that we'll go in that goes right back to the meeting room.
In the past, we, excuse me, in the past, we've always had, what few things like this we've had, either here or at the library or at one of the fire departments. And this is totally new ground for the county to be holding something at a winery.
I can tell you, the Rappahannock, Rappahannock Regional Commission's at Prince Michelle this week.
Yeah, but we're not the Rappahannock, Rappahannock.
Prince Michelle.
Regional Commission, we're the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors. What if, what if we had people that wanted to attend this but didn't want to attend it at a winery? Let's hope that Mr. Ockery gets a chance to build his community center, that all the. We're not talking about something in the future, we're talking about a week from now.
Right, right, right.
I just, I don't understand why you would do that and why the Chair thought that they had the authority to, to do that without the rest of the Board weighing in on something like that.
I thought I had the authority to try to make sure it was a welcoming environment.
But, but.
To speak up and not feel like they were in a business meeting.
We have been in this discussion several times before, Madam Chair. The Board Chair is only empowered to conduct a meeting and to make representations from a vote of the Board of this body. This body was unaware of, of you doing something like that until now it's set in place.
Yes, technically, if you want to be upset about something, you could say, there's an issue that I did this in the first place to get us some training that's for the entire county for free. And that is going to take place at a.
At a winery.
Location at a winery.
Well, I'm, I'm opposed to it and I wouldn't go if I was free that night for simply that reason, because I don't think it's, it's.
There will be no wine served.
It's just, it's just not a good example for us to be doing that. You picked a winery in your magisterial district. What about the other magisterial districts that have wineries that have?
Picked it based on size, it had nothing to do with my magisterial district.
Normada has, has plenty of room, I believe. That's in Jackson District.
I'm sorry, you're not happy with my?
I'm not, I'm not happy with it being at a winery. Wouldn't have to, I mean, I wouldn't have done that. I would have picked the Amosville Fire Department or the Little Washington Fire Department. I would have tried to make it centrally located. And again, it's a situation where I believe you acted without proper authority to do that. And we have had this discussion several times, Madam Chair, in the last year. This is your 12th month and I believe we've had this discussion three or four times.
Thank you.
Is it going to continue? I mean, is this the way the Board Chair is going to continue in Rappahannock now that they go off and speak for the rest of the Board without authorization? How did this ever get authorized to start with? That type of behavior is what I'm more concerned with.
Is it the educational piece?
No, 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 you're trying to throw a red herring in there. It's not about the education. Educational is one thing. We have had FOIA training, we've had it here in this courthouse twice, maybe three times. So we've had training right here. We had a lot, this, this will hold 80, 83 people, I think. The fire department in Little Washington will hold more. So it's not a training thing and don't throw that out at me like that.
Actually.
You should know better than that.
This is a training thing because people are more conducive to having a conversation outside of the boardroom than they are in.
The fire department, you've only got a list of about, what, 15 people here?
I just wanted to go on the record with this. I stand up to Mr. Fraser and my reason is very simple. I mean, I'm personally, I feel, I have, you know, very mixed feelings about this. I certainly draw this in a forward to the opportunity to have a VACO interaction locally and to have them come visit and the opportunity to learn. I do think, you know, certainly wineries and breweries are a touch point for a lot of issues, I don't see issues, challenges in this county. And certainly I discuss them frequently at a board level. And I think there's a number of people that for personal or religious reasons might feel uncomfortable in a winery atmosphere. And I would just prefer that we not hold any sort of governmental or quasi-governmental functions at wineries, breweries and other locations that start off the call in the future. Just as I would, I would think it's, you know, there's other locations that for other reasons wouldn't be appropriate. And we could always use the schools, any of the fire halls, you know, with asking and cooperation with our peers. You know, there's lots of other opportunities for, for places to meet in the county.
Madam Chair, I just want to reiterate our condolences to the Baumgartner family, loss of Doug Baumgartner. And then I also want to extend my condolences to the Zindel family. Mrs. Zindel died recently and I know it's a big, big loss for their family, many grandchildren and, and children who work here in the county and contribute a lot to our local economy. So I just want to extend, extend my condolences to the Zindel family. Thank you.
Mr. Parrish, I think you spoke already. Did you have anything else you wanted to?
Certainly you've got, you've got some other parting shots. You can't be done already.
There's still an evening meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Smith?
Planning.
And mine was going to be the VACO conference, just to make sure everybody knows. And Mr. Curry, I think you're going to, we have reported as a, could be a.
The Board would like, you could continue this meeting to a date, time, place certain or it could be a special meeting. Chair's choice.
I feel like it should be a special meeting.
We do special.
Can we not invite the press and not have a meeting? That's what we've done in the past. We've invited the press and not done government business in the course of a meeting.
Oh, no, this is very much a public meeting. You'll be talking about public information, leadership among the Board and other elected officials. So it must be FOIA noticed and.
Does that make for Rappahannock County?
Yes, you, I think. As your FOIA officer, I would say definitely notice it and the press and any other public is more than welcome to be there.
All right, let's do it that way. There's no other matters presented by the Board? We skipped K, so we can recess until the 7:00 PM?
Yep. 4:19. Another early meeting.
What do we have? What's left in our, I mean, I know we have.